Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with our agenda, I've got a couple housekeeping chores. Amy Biggs, would you stand up, please? At our last meeting, we had plenty of business to do and we had some encumbrances of monies from the previous year. And I called Amy out and I did a very poor job of that and very unprofessional. So I got with Amy. We had a very nice talk. I apologized to her. I told her I would apologize publicly in this meeting. So I'm doing that and to anyone else that I offended when I did that. I can work harder and I can work more professional. Please accept my apology. Yes, the other thing I need to do is recognize the sheriff's department as the sheriff already hit me up this morning. That this morning they unlocked my vehicle for the second time in like the last six or eight months. So Sheriff, I appreciate you guys' services. Okay, first on the agenda is surf broadband. Teresa?
Hello, everyone. Good to see you all again.
Just come on.
Hopefully, we have enough. Do you have any more?
Yeah. I think that's what you're saying.
This is an update of a previous presentation. So there's some updated documents in front of the package there. They're just kind of the walking through it. We all know each other. My name is Gene Cruz. I'm the CEO of Surf. The channel name is Internet. We're Surf Air Wireless. What we did, Internet wireless and we moved to surf broadband and now we're Surf Internet. But we're a 20 plus year old company. I'm the founder of the largest private shareholder ever in the county. And we've been part of Wiltley County for a long time in various ways. So just to remind you all, we have a commitment to trying to serve as many members of your community as possible. And we started out by building fiber to the home in Columbia City. We spent over $5 million of private funds building fiber to the home here. And frankly, we got off to a bad start. We brought in one internet connection from the outside world to Columbia City. And we have, at that time, we've been talking to you all about bringing in, using the grant funds to connect some networks together to bring in another one. Well, it took, you know, we went once a month without approving the grant and then our primary circuit was so old, it was running on utility poles that it kept going down. And that gave us a bad sentiment in the community. And so on our own dollars, we spent several hundred thousand of our own money to bring in a separate and protect it here in the county. It's just, which really underlines why we need to do this project. So what we're requesting is a $1.7 million grant. We're going to match it with 800 some thousand of our own money. And the reason this is so important is that this unlocks the key to the NTIA middle mile grant, which is 5.3 more million dollars from the feds and then Surf is going to contribute an additional two and a half million dollars total, 3.5 million dollars of additional funds that Surf is investing. I'm doing this off of memory, so if the numbers don't match up, forgive me. But here's the thing. I was just at a conference last week and the NTIA is going to grant the funding next month. So, you know, we've been kicking the can down the road since I first met you all last summer. Now's the time we have, we have to make a decision because we have our next of the middle due to the NTIA disperse. And if you decide not to fund this, which is your prerogative, we're going to tell the NTIA to pull the plug. We're not going to chew the grant anymore. It's a shame that we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of our own money. And frankly, it's the only way for your community, some of these people in the community, they ever get surfed. And a really good example of that is that the state has this program called the Indiana Connectivity Program. And it just closed the last round. There were 30 some addresses in Wiltley County that applied for this program. The program subsidized each address by $4,000. Surf looked at every single address with the idea that we would invest enough money that we could get our return on our dollars in 10 years. And of those 30 some, only four worked. And in order to pass those schools, we had to invest $150,000 of our own money to get a $16,000 subsidy to serve four people. And those are the four that worked. There's 29 more that didn't work that nobody else did. Had we approved this project last summer, we would have served them all. So I hate to say it, but it meets the road today. We got to figure out if you're going to move forward broadband in the county. County broadband ready, which means you're open for business and for business broadband? We're here. We're willing to put our money where our mouth is. If you look through, I think we've identified all the questions I've heard. There's a sample contract in there which we're using with Culver. So Culver being served $500,000, Surf is matching that with 760 of our own money to build fiber to the home to every resident. And Culver already has a problem, but they recognize the benefit of having fiber. Choice. Another one in there, if you look on, this one here in Michigan, I'm really, really proud of. I think some of you said, well, how do we know you're not going to take our money? And so this will demonstrate our track record. This is in Livingston County, Michigan. And the township supervisor in Cahockta granted Surf $330,000 in grant money. We matched it with $330,000. And that township supervisor said it's the fastest he's ever seen government money go to work in his 20 come years career. We delivered to 270 residents in Cahockta Township. Like these people had nothing. I mean, pick sticks, dirt roads, like nothing, nothing. In 90 days, we went from sitting in front of you like today proving it, to 90 days later, all of those people had problems, fiber optic problems, like real problems. So you can see the stories over and over again. There's Isla Township, we received a 416K grant. We matched it 416K of our own. Nidilla Township, we had 40,000. We matched it with 384 of our own. All of those residents have now fiber optic broadband. This is a complete project. When you look on the right side, because they funded these grants, on the right side are all the places we built with our own money. And you can see the economic impact. 1.4 million in grants, Surf put in 12 million, 13.6 million in economic development, 10,900 people enrolled in Livingston County now has broadband. That's almost exactly the same story as what we talked about here. I know over the years, you've granted other broadband providers money for wireless and whatnot. But we're here. We're going to put our money where our mouth is. We're going to make this happen. Believe you guys. And I know there's been a bunch of community support and I'm sure some people will speak about it. So, but before we turn it over, I want to know if you have any questions. I'm happy to expand on anything.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
There, I've heard that there is 600 to 700 million that the Fed is going to be giving to each state, or at least Indiana. So how does that correlate with what you guys are doing with whatever money we might appropriate?
One of the most strategic parts of this, of the federal dollars is there has to be local matching. I think I told you all last time I was here, we moved like there's a 0 to 100 scoring. 20% of the score is if you have a local match. So like the private dollars like ours, then there needs to be a local match of some kind within the federal. So if we don't have a local match, we go from 100 points to 80 points. And the feds have already set out, said they're going to throw away any grant that's left. So by you matching this, it is a feeder for that future thing. If you don't do it, you'll have to do it at some point if you ever want to have any of those dollars. So you do have another opportunity later. It's our intention though, we've designed this system so that we can build the infrastructure, partnering with Northeastern RNC to use their pool so that we can make it easier to use the D funding you're talking about. And also the state has next level connect round four that's coming out this quarter, so sometime in the next couple of months. And our intention is to apply for enough funds to do the whole rest of the county.
What's your timeframe again for the whole county?
The next level connect round four will go out the bid sometime this quarter, so sometime maybe in March. And if last year's any track record of how the state will do this one, it'll probably take them eight months to a year to fund it. And then we'll start construction in 2024 if it'll work. D money will, grants are going to start being available a year from now, so in March 2024. And it's estimated that money won actually be distributed to 2025.
So I guess further into that then, what, with all that information, what's your timeframe for getting connected to each corner of this county for the people that need it the most, that don't have any?
Yeah, so there's a couple things we're doing. There's this program that I mentioned earlier called the Indiana Connectivity Program. The state will subsidize $4,800 for every single address that applies for it. We're building a tool that allows residents in Wiltley County and other counties to come to our website, do a speed test. It has to be proven that you have inadequate broadband here at your address. It logs it into a portal that goes to the state and our goal is, because that's an immediate funding thing that's going to happen in the next few months, our goal is to get as many residents of Wiltley County as possible that are adjacent to these areas that have been built with the grant money to apply for that. Because if we put like 10 or 15 of those $4,800 applicants together, it makes a project that we can pull off. So our intention is in the short term to do as much energy on that $4,800 per address as we can, while we then apply for the next level connect grant at the end of this month, or the end of March, to do the whole rest of the county. And then whatever's left after that will apply for the D money.
So you're saying this is probably a good eight to 10 years from serving the entire county?
I think it'd be a little quicker than that, probably three, three years.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great question.
Will the, will the people out in the rural areas have to pay any of their own money? Because, because before the talk was that they were going to have to pay considerable money to get it.
Yeah, our plan, the way we put it together is no setup fee, no installation cost, no contract, standard price. About the only exception would be if the residents have exceptionally long driveway, which are 75 some foot.
Yeah.
That issue is so far off.
In one of your recent news releases, you talked about the town chair of Busville.
Yes.
750 residents, homes on it. How's the mechanics of that work?
In terms of like, we're paid 100% of our own dollars. So.
At one time, the AP, Indiana, Michigan was not granting you, do so you have a pole. Has that been accomplished?
No, we decided to go ahead and do most of the city underground. There's a few areas where we have to use poles. A bunch of the city will be underground and in the areas like any industrial, Long 33, where there's a lot of businesses will still have to use poles. Already started. Takes about a year to start it up.
They're talking about spring of 2023?
Yeah, we're starting the underground construction. That's, it's fully approved by our board. It's fully funded and we're ready. It's kind of outside of this, like these, these funds don't have anything to do with it other than we will use, there's a route that goes from Columbia City to Chair of Busville that we will use to provide backup connectivity for the city of Chair of Busville.
Once the main line gets to chip, comes to the big chair of Busville, establish a central location and disperse out from there?
Exactly.
Why is the router called an ERO?
ERO? An ERO?
Yes.
That's a brand. We use the ERO routers because it's the number one problem that our customers have is having poor wifi at their homes. Like they, they end up having a router they bought at Walmart in like 2002. Then we put fiber optic internet and then a gig of the speed and a router like 10 meg. So by using the ERO router, we can actually verify how much speed they're getting at their home and help to troubleshoot the problem. Yeah, I can't refer you to this for anything with labor, but I try to go on like phone service all the month just to stay in touch with our customers. And it turns out that our customer had a knee replacement. And she had a Bluetooth sensor in her knee that sent a signal back to a wifi device, but that wifi device was like 20 years old. And so I don't know if you know anything about wifi, but wifi in your home is only as fast as the slowest speeds. So her knee replacement device was talking to this wifi thing that was bringing her gig internet down to 10 meg. So she called and complained that she's only getting 10 meg. We looked on her hero, and we're getting a gig. Let me come out and help you. I went out and come to find out, her knee was basically on the network. So we moved it to a different wifi. But we can see that all through the ERO platform, which is why we went out.
Website says that you can also give teachers and veterans a $50 discount. Is that correct?
I don't know everybody else's thoughts on this, but I've been supportive of this plan since I heard of it. I, I hesitate to, to give, I guess, county funding to a private business. I, I mean, I hope everybody can see the, I guess, the issues that could arise from that. However, I, I am still in support of this. I think it's in need of our, our county is in need of this. I don't know how everybody else is going to vote, but I would, I would, is it time? Can I make a motion?
I think there's some other people that would maybe like to speak.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the broadband surf issue? Please state your name and your address. Stand up so everyone can, can see who you are.
Morning, everybody. I just wanted to share a, somebody lives outside of South, they live south. And she's, I had been out to work on the computer, it can be the bright speed, centering. And she said, if I don't even my old phone, it will drop my internet speed to half. So she'd do that basically to get it out 90%. And so I said, do you mind if I, you know, tell the county commissioner about your experience? And she worked for Lincoln, Lincoln up in Port Raine. And she got enough speed to get data and everything, but it is very slow. I ran speed tests on her out there, it's five meg. And she called them, she called them for help or different things. There are basically no help at all. And this is what people in Wiltley County around South Wiltley have to deal with. And they're just, they're just often, they get wireless if they work during the day and I've heard bad things about that also. I'm in South Wiltley and I have media comms. I'm great so far. I do notice when I'm streaming, I have some issues with the buffering and I'm a poor at seeing stuff buffering. But I'm going to go to their lines or what it is, so I'm going to call them, you know, technicians. And a little background on me, I work at a physical community school, working on it, so I can see a lot of this stuff happening and I feel for all these people out in the country when I work on this computer, when I'm in that, there. And I said, you know what's really lucky you can do? And I said, I'd be stuck with this slower speed and totally hot DSL in South Wiltley. And centering, like I think the top speed I could get was maybe 10, 15, since not, I think 13, but definitely could pull any feed of their, their building. And so, you know, South Wiltley, sure, you know, you're close enough, they can get out of the country and you're going to get it. And sensor speed, that's a pretty good job, knowing new cable and that kind of thing, but it is nothing like fiber optic. And just my experience around fiber optic tool, it is, it's so nice and it's asynchronous. You get the same speed for upload and download. So it's a great thing to have. I think my son, he was up here in Columbia City two years ago. He just got served Internet, hooked up. He loves it. He said, I have no buffering, I have no problems. He did have knee problems. And he said, it is so fast. And I, I just love, love how it works. It said, it works perfect for me. Everything I need, there is that with it. This cost, with me and Tom would have gone up to $145 a month for one gig speed. But Surf, you got $85 a month for one gig speed. So that saves you a lot of money. And so I just, you know, wanted to tell commissioners some experiences I've had, you know, with people out in the country that I've helped. A lot of it I can't, hands are tied because of internet speed. And that's what they're dealing with. But I know it's a lot of money for you guys to invest and it would surely be nice for our neighbors out there. Anyway, I do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ryan Dahl, 101 South Maple Street, South Wiltley. So I'm right downtown, right across from the library in South Wiltley. Moved there about eight months ago. Formerly I lived down south of town off of the road. So personal experience is I lived there for three and a half years in an empty neighborhood. Like, when something like that, horrible buffering on videos constantly. And I called everybody I could call. Every little sign popped up and said, I see an internet. I call them. They come out. They, they bring their little device and they go, yep. Well, you can put 110 foot power on top of the building here. Satellite, they won't. But it's just what they're talking about, you know. Moving into South Wiltley, I have media comms too. I'm not quite as satisfied as he is about it, but it's still not as good as I've had in the past. But I live right across the street from the library. What I do is pay attention. And when people are parked in their car, just in front of my house, I'll go out, I'll put in what happens, like. Crazy how many times people come to the public library to sit there and use internet in their car. Like, I can't say it happened a dozen times at least if I've been there any time. I go, I'm going to go again. And, you know, they brought fiber into town and I watched them board into town and I was like, woo-hoo, we're getting fiber. Well, they brought it from the library and then they brought it to the school, but none of us got it. We're still dealing with it. The personal experience there, both, both I experienced it as a resident out in county and now I'm experiencing it through the people that are parked across the street from me trying to soak that free internet library. But that's the only place they can get high speed fiber, so.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Governor, for us, for mine, 8324, let's say. Um, here's a deputy chamber of commerce. First, I would like to commend Surf. They moved in out for the last couple of weeks. We had Bright Street in the past, since I took over the chamber in last March. It has been a awful experience. For one, we impairment, really bad customer service, even before it became a Bright Street. We couldn't get a hold of anyone. As the chamber of commerce, I handle all of the networking for, for our businesses. And I can't sit there and promote our businesses. I can't even run, you know, like contact, contact. It's been an issue with our board that, you know, I can't get emails out to any of my members about that. One phone call to Surf, I, I was looking up last year, right when I started the board. Surf, that they brought the maps out. We, we had some really great discussions. I was very positive. And I also run the business now. And I feel so tall, wanting to do that today. And it's people moving to this area. And it's not just people moving to this area from, I don't know, you know, four K. It's people leaving out of state. And they expect to have an internet. And they expect to be able to work from their home and they can't. And so I struggle with that for days. So when my filing went right to just, we couldn't go and we couldn't get a router, we couldn't get a wire, and it was just that. We were out of the internet for probably five weeks. I called Surf and they were out there with it, probably seven days. I now currently have some of the cash for the internet. We put in, by the time they had us hooked up last week, Ryan was getting on another screen. My IT guy had a little bit. He was getting on another monitor and they were just there. Absolutely fabulous. So for that, I'd say thank you very much, Ms. Orley. Now, as a resident in South Wiltley, I'm four and a half out of town. We are also building a farm off the street. And we are struggling because we don't have the capabilities of having any kind of alarm system. We can't even have a little camera on our door. I'm right now, I, I do have a membership, Chamber of Commerce, also for free broadband, also very expensive. We can have each other. I am required to have a certain amount of alarm system and security on our farm. Also, to live in South Wiltley, you have to know that we deal with cyber strikes quite often. Esther Light Farms has gone through three. And so we really need this. We really need this for the people that we want to get in here. We really need this for the associates and our district director head, for our folks that are coming in out of state. Also, if you had kids during COVID and you saw the little buses that would have to go around and sit in most people's homes, just like the lighter, just so they could have internet. And let me tell you, that didn't take care of it very well. So if anything ever happens and our kids have to be able to use internet to do the store, you're in a real problem. And I cannot express you how important it is that we have really good internet. So I can relate. I need this kind of being done myself, for my businesses and for businesses I represent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I have a question. I'm a rich drag from the city of Hannah. And I already told the record for it. Uh, demonstrate success. I haven't tried to detect it, but some of the things that are here and are not here. We had 39 respondents in less than three days. If you are here and you go down with the response. Okay, that means we have 38 respondents in that package that are not representing the industry. There are no people from other than me. So if you can picture for a minute, 38 of them are registered for, contact. Four are nobody's spoken to. If you delay this today, you are going to be out in heaven. We need this. We all know that already. There are no other businesses for this, even if we had a big situation, another with the fire comments about that. Nobody else is breaking down their door to offer this service to the other county. Have you ever met the CEO of Axinity or Comcast or Spacker or several of the other larger companies? These people do not live. Gina's right up front. She's on Facebook, which is more than I can say, but count. Has some wonderful dialogue online and I would love it if you would have all been a part of it. And I have a separate issue I want to discuss with them, but I have that access to all of it. There is high accountability. You don't have to vote through. One of them's got a dollar, it's a bit pitched by me. There's no reason not to do that. You have powers to negotiate a contract. I'm saying as representative of the public, where I also want to hold everybody involved in the conversation. And I want to wrap up with this. I would highly encourage all of these people. I will be caring exactly who vote, which way and what pounds you need to be prepared to represent. So the making of this is probably going for, because as you can see in Bright Street, the making of this is pretty important.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. The size of project we have, and nothing against you people whatsoever, you're the only ones that stepped up. We need it. There's no question. But the amount of dollars we're talking about, I guess to the commissioners, why wasn't Dale and the EDC ever brought into all this? Why wasn't Dale and the EDC ever brought into all this?
I'll refer to Commissioner Basinger.
I've had conversations with Dale and Dale thinks there's a lot more money out there than what we're trying to go for right now. So like I said, you know, the 1.7, I hesitate giving 1.7 not because of you, because what I hear from Dale, there's a lot more grant money out.
But then with Jean says we still have the map. With the jail project, we're spending a whole lot of our funds on that.
If which Dale was here today to explain his side of it.
Ryan Dahl, one on one, South Maple Street, South Whitley. I've got something to say about that. Where is Dale? Exactly?
He's entitled to PTO time, just like everybody else.
I sit on the South Whitley Street, so I've had a little bit of Dale. Hey, I'm just going to call him out too. Dale doesn't represent. He's working in outside real estate brokers, trying to do a deal with it. He hasn't followed through on things with it. He hasn't been available. You know, so just to put that on the record, I don't feel that Dale really is a good representative of South of Whitley County. And if you want to, if anybody wants to get with me off the record, I can give you more information on my experience with that. From the sir perspective, we just dropped the ball. Normally we meet up and we just. I understand he was off there traveling. I know we talked to him.
Typically, that would be the first stop for a business trying to enter a new community would be the, you know this. In my professional position, I work for a local bank and deal with the EDC quite a bit about new businesses that want to come in and all that kind of stuff. So that's, like I said, typically would have been, should have been first stop. But it's too little, too late, you know?
I'll speak for myself. My experience, I've had interacted with Dale for, going on over a year now. And the, my discussions, because I'm on the first side, my discussions are usually on the industrial and commercial parts. So gameplay, health attack, et cetera. And focused on, you know, bringing in large connectivity to those areas. Since this is more rural focused, there's not as much of a heavy industrial here by customers. So I have to get the. Mostly focused on my own purchases within our company.
I have a comment. I appreciate the updated form, but I'm, you know, we're being thrown this contract that we've never seen before. Who negotiated this contract?
Well, it's just a sample. You approved the funding that in the next step would be for us. So this is how I went down the fall order. We gave a sample contract. And then say your word of funding to us today. We would then negotiate a contract between the legal team. That's just a sample. It's not, it's not what we're agreed to. We would agree to fund it based on usually your terms of compensation.
Okay, so this number five on compensation terms, when it says we owe full payment when you reach 25 customers, that can actually be bumped up to a. 25 customers for final payment isn't very. All right. Well, you can see where my mind went. $1.7 million for 25 customers. I just wish we would have gotten this a little earlier.
So is there any way have to, if there is a lot more dollars out here from the federal government on grants for all this? If we, if you get, I don't know if it'll ever happen, but if you get enough money to pay for everything in Whitley County, is there any way that 1.7 comes back to Whitley County? If you don't use it?
So the way it would work is. 1.7 is your contribution for $20 million down the road. We apply for the rest of the county, spend the cost on average of $6,000, $8,000. You will still have to come up with, through some mechanism, 40% of that can be lost. So the sentence, you're just taking it down in payment. There are going to be additional. You pay it now or pay it later, the 1.7 is going to be the same.
So will we pay more than 1.7 down the road? Is that what you're saying?
But they haven't released the final terms for the new grant, but the asset is a little while. The highest score is 20% of all. Actually, they really. You get, what was the saying for the bucket? 20%, but if you go 50%, you get much higher score. So Whitley County will be seeing this every other county in Indiana for the 1.8 billion. And it will be scored partly based on how much local.
Can I clarify what you just said to make sure I'm understanding what you said? Yes. Okay, we're giving you the 1.7 million dollars.
Yeah.
And you're going to come back most likely asking for more. Is that what I just heard?
I don't know what the rules are. We, so when we do this grant, we're going to sort of say there's another $3,000. And on average, that's $600, $6,000 for residents for $18 of additional funding. I'm making.
I understand that.
So if the rules are there right now, we would have to come up with 20% of $18,000. To continue applying for the grant.
So what I'm hearing is, we don't know how much is even going to cost. That's what I get.
Well, I put it around and say, listen, if you don't, if you don't do this, the NCI middle mile grant will come through.
But how do we know in the future, we're going to be able to cover those funds that you're going to need for the next grant? How do we know that? Thank you.
All we're doing is taking the money and putting it to work to make a dent in the process.
Thank you. I wish we would have known that when we got into this way last August. Because now here we are on vote day, we're finding out all these additional charges and what may be coming in unknowns. I just wish we would have gotten it earlier. Thank you for your, thank you. I understand.
I'm going to shut off the public comments because we've had many meetings of this and let the board discuss. I'd just like to say a few comments, and I think Joan hit it very square on the head. We've asked Teresa on several occasions to try to get more help, a bigger committee, and to go after more grant funds. Thinking that this was going to happen because my question earlier was, what is it going to cost the people out in the rural areas? Because, because there's a lot of area that's not going to get touched here for quite some time. And those people are telling us. Don't do it because we're not going to get it out here. Part of that is where they live. I understand that. But normally, if we deal, work in a deal with a company like this, and we're going to give them considerable money like this. We'll have a contract that will help protect the county, which is kind of what Tom was alluding to. Where that two years down the road, if they sell out to somebody, they've got our 1.7 million. They've taken there and got their profit. And we don't know what the next company exactly is going to do. So in some cases, when a company comes in and if we have assisted them through redevelopment or something like that. We have a five-year plan and it's prorated. If they stay a full five years, they get all the funds with no strings attached. But if they leave after three years, they have to pay back part of that funds because they probably profited because they sold out. We have heard nothing of this type of contract or seen a contract or heard of a contract till today. And that's been most of our heartburn with this is that there's nothing that says what exactly they're going to do. And how they're going to do it and what our agreement with them is going to be. And so forth. So this board, for the most part, is for projects like this. Enter, but we have to protect ourselves with the 1.7 million. Now we hear that. You know, I asked a question if there's going to have to be more money paid for the rural areas. We just learned that we're going to probably have to come up with another 20%, which actually does not surprise me. But we're just hearing about today. And I believe there is more grant money out there somewhere that can help bridge all this. But I don't know that it's went about, that we've tried to get it the way I, and that's why. Dale was kind of asked to be brought in and try to help or a committee. And that I talked to Nick about, about, I think you're going to be on a committee to maybe do this. So when we get this, the day of the meeting, it's really hard to digest.
I think, I think. All of that can be written into the contract. And like what you were saying with the grants, there has to be a match from the county, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
The grants that are in process right now will, we will cancel our application.
Is it dependent on a match to receive that grant that you're talking about, pulling the application? Is it a? Is it?
The other thing is on the contract, that is a draft sample contract. But there is built into that, you know, the provisions for, you know, performance based or milestone based payments. You know, and verification methodology to determine if the contract can be, you know, return to be what you want to be. That's the negotiable point. We're not, we're not saying that that is the be all and end all. It's just that we are, we are willing to work with the county in order to make this, you know, build this off of the initial grant. In order to do the best they can.
Is it possible, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Is it possible for the extra 1.7 million or whatever it was? The additional after the initial investment to have Surf match maybe half of that? Since you guys stand to profit and the county isn't getting anything off of this, other than providing a service to our residents, our constituents and everybody else. Is it possible that we say, okay, we'll do this amount if Surf does this amount and write that into our contract? And have like a graduated plan like you guys have, sort of like a construction contract on a residential home?
Yeah. So when we said 20% of the county, that was assuming a 30% of Surf, 50%.
Okay.
That's, if you don't do that, that's the guarantee. But we know we're going to do at least 30%. We've got to build this.
It's just really disappointing with everybody working so much on this. To find out that they have a vote. Because we were told the 1.7 million dollars was to get 768 homes started and then go. And now we're being told that 1.7 million dollars is really just for the 768 homes because you're going to come back and ask for more money. That's what my paper said, 768.
It's 768. And then you get the NCI grant. 5.3 that's coming from the Fed, it's the 768 that you would fund. And that makes it 30,000 more. So it's not just 768. It's more like, for whatever reason.
I guess I'm just really disappointed, Harry, you're going to come back and ask for more money because I don't know where we're going to get that.
There's no guarantee. Like the state of Indiana, the next little connect grant doesn't require.
But that's how I understood.
Yeah, no, I'm just being transparent.
Since August, that's how I understood the whole thing.
Right. I don't know what the future holds. We are committed, like we did with the Indiana connectivity program. We just did a hundred fifty thousand Surf private dollars. The state's only matching with 15. We're not. That's 30, 116 more. That's not a lot, but if we keep doing that, 116 in a time, it won't be 300. And that's what we're trying to do. At least we're doing something. And that's why I want to get props. We're putting in a money room out there every day, honey.
And I understand that. And it would be great to have broadband, but the unknown funds that are out there that you're going to come back and ask us for, I don't know where we're going to get that.
Well, we may get fully funded by Indiana, the next round.
But you just told us you have to have matching.
Only with the federal, I'm sorry. Only with the federal. The ICP and the NLC don't have any national. We're going to go for that first, but I can't just stand here and tell you.
I appreciate it. I just wish we would have had the full information at the very beginning. Because every time we meet, it's different every single day. Because it would be great to have it. I've heard great things from people who have signed up for your service and they will really, really like it.
So if we, if we give the 1.7 out and we go down the road and you come back and want another 3.2, if we don't have it to give you, will the project just stop?
No, no, that's only for, this project, if you approve 1.7.
Yeah.
Everything that's in this book will happen.
Okay.
Every address that's, every address that's listed at the back of that book.
Okay.
All the areas that are specified in those.
With this 1.7. And if you do have to come back, of course, you probably don't know, if you need more money, you won't know, it'll be next year, the year after, or what? You don't have a clue.
The money won't even come out until spring of 2020.
Okay.
That's very true. We have a couple of years, but in the meantime, we're going to leverage the Indiana next hole connection program, Indiana transfer program. Anything else that comes up, our intention would not be to ask for any more money, but I cannot believe that we wouldn't ever do it. But it's not part of the project. If you approve the 1.7, 3,500 people are going to get the project.
I only see 768 addresses.
Yeah, that's for the, so we started this with a 1.7 million grant for 760 something, and then the NCI. So then we decided to leverage that towards the NCI. Then it's 768, not 787.
And how many?
768 plus the NCI, which is definitely 25.
And how many customers do you show would be your target in Whitley County when the whole county is completed and you've serviced every address?
An entire county?
Any comments, questions for?
So what you're telling me, to make sure I'm straight, the 1.7 is guaranteed to hook up 700 homes, did you say?
1.7 is guaranteed to connect 768 plus 160,000. If the NCI approves the grant, which they're going to do next month, then it's an additional 2,000, 2,500, whatever. And that's coming from the Fed, 35,000. Surf is matching that with 2.5. Or if I were to do your 1.7, sort of double dip it on it, say that we have a little grant. Then we won't ask for any more money unless we collectively decide to go after each grant. Then that's way easier to rule out. They're very good. 0.7 today immediately turns from the 768 home service, plus care about so, South Whitley, all of those are funding of their own.
And we still, and you'll still come back with this for a contract? The way we want it. You have a.
Yeah, I would put it in your approval language that mutually agree upon contract.
Do you have a committee set up for that to go through a contract? You're working on it? No, I'm just asking if.
I do, it doesn't matter. I just want to make sure we've got a few on there every year.
I spoke to Dale yesterday and Dale had asked me if I was interested. Teresa has asked, and I'm sure if anybody else wants to be involved with it, then more than welcome.
Discussion, are we done? Any more discussion? Questions?
If, if you, you're going to guarantee, we're going to have eight, 800 homes hooked up for 1.7 million. You don't know what we're going to have to pay after that. It could be zero, it could be another 3 million. I think we've dragged our feet long enough that it's time to do something. I hear the public, I hear you, I know we need it. You're the only ones that stepped up and I appreciate that. So, you know, with the contract, I would be in favor of giving 1.7. That's where I'm at.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, have a motion?
A second.
There's a second? Any, any further discussion?
So you're going to make a committee up for the contract and include Dale in with that so we can get his feelings on it too. Okay?
Any more discussion?
I, I'd like to know how you're going to protect the county from them coming back and asking for money that we do not have. But then we don't, but then we're doing this so the county can have internet and if it stops at that point, the county won't have internet, just a select few.
I'm counting on with everyone working at home, with all the e-learning days and all that, I'm just really hoping the state and the federal step up and continue with the grant money to help all the counties out in the whole United States, just not Whitley County. I mean, yeah. What we're going to do, if, if in two years down the road, they come back and want another million, I'm sitting here right now, I can't tell you. I don't know. That, that's, that's something else, but I, I think we've dragged our feet long enough. It's time to.
Remember, we have to answer to those people also.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's what would be so important about having a contract that addresses those concerns. Maybe leave that kind of open-ended and then if that time were ever to happen, in this contract, we would have an out. But I think that would be at least a starting point.
Okay, any other discussion, comments? We have a motion. And a second. That we fund the 1.7 million with a contract. Proper contract. I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed to say. Sorry.
Do we arm wrestle? Is that what happens?
Don't know. Does not pass. Any other comments on this?
So we're just going to let this die then and not go anywhere else with it? Joan, I, I truly understand where you're coming from on what we're going to do with money later on. I guess I'm at the point that, okay, we're going to take care of 800 and hopefully things will keep, the grant money will keep working out. If not, it'll just stop there until we can somehow get more grant money or something, but at least we're going to get a start on it.
And it's most likely going to get more expensive as time goes on, just like the jail.
I, I came in here today as a no. There's been, until you stepped up and explained everything to me more than I've heard for a year. Yeah, my concern is the money, but we got, we got to start sooner or later. We got to.
My feeling on it is we're, we've talked about this for months and it comes down to the same issue. Last minute information. We should have seen contracts before. And, and, you know, in theory, I'm for it. But the way this has been put together, we're down to the last minute trying to make decisions and, and getting promises that we don't know what it looks like. We don't know what other communities, I mean, we got one here today, but I, we don't know what contracts, what those look like. So that, that's my holdup on it.
Could we vote with the understanding of an acceptable contract? If the contract that we, we just can't come to terms on something acceptable, then it dies at that point, but say we would, we would be in favor of giving this money in lieu of an acceptable contract.
You can, you can make another motion, but it has to be different from the first. You can't re, you can't make the same motion again since the didn't pass. You can make another motion, but it has to be significantly or
Okay.
It has to be different from the motion that has already been defeated.
I will motion that we give the money as long as you guys get the grant that you've applied for. And we have an acceptable contract to all parties. Is that different?
Well, I would tell you that I would, I assumed in the first motion that those were all parameters. So, I mean, the verbiage of making the motion is, I guess, I'm going to leave it, I'm going to refer, defer to Jim on that, but the, the verbiage to make in the motion is different, but I, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change where I'm at because I'm still, that's what I assumed was part of that. And I think, I think that was a fair assumption.
And what is, what is a, what is, what is a contract? What are we looking for in that contract? You know? I mean, I hate to vote for something at 1.7 million and these people walk out of here today thinking it's approved. And then we can't work out a, a, a contract. You know, this, this all should have been, for the most part, pretty well worked through if you, if you're asking for 1.7 million dollars. Or, or the project is. I'm not necessarily saying surf is, but the, the project is asking for that. And we should have had examples of what that might look like or, and the commissioners should have had that. They're the, I mean, they're the ones that's going to approve a contract. We're approving the funding and, and we haven't, we haven't seen anything of that. And that's my whole issue. You know, that, that's been my whole issue for quite some time. So right now, unless we get a different motion. It's off, off right now, so. And I hope people understand what, what struggles we go through to try to, try to understand this and, and to understand it and to protect the citizens and the county on this. This considerable amount of money, it's a considerable project. Normally you do get samples and you do talk some of these issues already through.
What happens when this comes up now?
That's, that's what I was thinking too, John, what, what happens here? I guess we go back to the drawing board, Teresa and, and committee goes back and, and obviously they must get some of these things hashed out and make perhaps during that time, there's more more grants available and so forth. I, that I, I don't know. That's what, that was my thinking also. Where do we go from here? Okay, hearing. Nothing? We'll move on. Thanks, everyone. Okay. Next on the agenda. Resolution for our funding. This is for the work that Baker Tilly did, has been doing on the jail project. We've approved this before, so this is just to clean, clean this up with a resolution.
What's the resolution number 23-05?
This is 2023-05.
Oh, motion. That we accept the resolution.
Nick makes a motion that we approve resolution number 2023-05. Second by John. Any further discussion?
Is there a, is there a general description of what these services were or is it just a lot of different things?
Um, this was the five-year comprehensive plan. The financial plan and. Yeah, it's all jail. I thought it was, I thought we were using ARPA for. Do you have the description here?
I have the resolution.
So with my understanding that we're using ARPA for the comprehensive plan and we were using the jail tax for anything related to the jail, but and Kami's confirming that now. So this would just be funds that we use for our financial planning.
So it's unrelated to the jail?
Yes.
Okay. Good question.
I have nothing else.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed to say. Next one is resolution 2023-06. And this was money on the handhelds that we purchased last fall. Correct, Jason? Okay, so almost a year ago.
I'll make a motion.
And these were out of ARPA funds.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the 2023-06 resolution.
Okay, motion by Tom? Second by Thor?
I think he was just a little bit quicker than me. I heard him before I was sent. So if you wanted, if John wants to take the second, that's fine with me.
All right, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same? Passes unanimously. Okay, next on the agenda, Jason, Janelle?
This is Spencer, Sheriff of Whitley County. Um, today I think we have three short issues that will take pretty long. Spoke to commissioners yesterday on all three, so they're aware of all the situations. So I think the first one is, we'll just get out of the way of his, his contract, which he's done. And we, and one is unfortunately absent to do it. It's, we're back to basically doing it, so it's with the mash and when everything's approved, I think we'll chat, so go look over that as well. Um, so are there any questions on that?
Any questions on sheriff contract?
I've already, I signed it and I provided, we have, we have.
Okay, and we have a resolution. 2023-07 on the sheriff's contract. Is there any questions or discussions on that?
Motion to approve the sheriff's salary agreement.
Motion by John, a second by Thor, that we approve resolution number 2023-07. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those?
I have a comment.
Okay.
For the vote, I would just like to say I had, had a private meeting with Jason and we talked about the contract. And I think the point that was being contested at the very end of it was a very fair point for Jason to look at for his compensation. And I also think that when it came down to it, he made the decision with the county in mind, and I think even made the comment that I didn't run for this job just to make a big paycheck or something along that line. So I want to commend Jason on his willingness not only to lead, but also to keep the county and the council in mind when we move forward with looking at compensation and, and I appreciate you doing that. We had a little bit of difficulty with a contract previously on how we interpreted and how, how it was interpreted otherwise. And I think that clears this up. And I think I want to give you a thumbs up for taking the high road and, and going in that direction. Appreciate that.
And I had heard that also from Kim Wheeler. On your, on your comments.
And Kay, that's not a negative towards Mark or the last chair. It's just that it was a conversation about that previous contract that just wasn't, you know, it was never really clear. So don't take it that way because it's not, I don't mean to imply that either. I apologize if, if that's what you were thinking there. So just to be clear.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the resolution. Any other comments? We'll take the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Passes unanimously. We have the contract and the resolution for you to sign. Yes, next.
Is there any questions about legal deputy fees? Um, I kind of tried to explain it the best I could, did not take up too much time today. It's basically, uh, there was some things that weren't done according to state where the counts of the past legal bucket attorneys prior to the ISA many years ago that were done and continue to be done that way. State where the counts has kind of set the playing field a little bit more level, explain things better. So this is the proper way for state where the counts to improve the legal deputy. Therefore, it has to be approved for those money, for that money to be paid out. A commissary has to give it for you. A commissary usually doesn't take any approval of the specific body, but this circumstance is a special circumstance that that's why it has to come before you, it has to be approved and recorded in a public meeting at one time thing, therefore I could say that a commissary, county general will create a line, not anything else.
And you use her?
She, she handles anything to do with inside the sheriff's department. If I have, I, I, like the last time I concerned with special deputy, reserve deputy. Tim Longball served on the merit board. Once we put him in as an officer, I do run things through there because he technically, that's a conflict. that's a conflict of interest, so he has resigned from them, and he had to be replaced with somebody that's not classified as a law enforcement office. So there was just small things that needed to be done, and with being, you want to make sure we did that the right way, and just basically cover my, my, and everybody else, so that's, that's why. There's no retainment fee on that, which has changed a lot from the old, there's no retainment fee. When you use her, you get billed the, the next month, and then you pay it then. There's no retainment fee for the full court, and, yeah, for the state.
Roughly, what's her rate?
I think I used her, I, she called me with travel, and I think that's probably.
You don't, you don't know what?
Four resolutions.
You don't know what her rate?
Yeah.
Hourly rate?
It's a big attorney that Mark used, that bat shipment, let's go by her, I think, maybe that conversation was in the past, and her, um, she was very interesting, very intelligent, till us in two thousand, uh, one six, three percent.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason?
So I guess, I guess I'm just asking for the, the vote to make sure that commissary funds can use the legal deputy fees.
Do you have a motion?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Joan moves, Nick seconds that we use commissary funds to pay the legal fees.
I'm choosing that comment area right now, Jason.
Yeah.
If you could share that with us next month, I'm just curious.
Okay, have a motion. No more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same.
Last thing was, uh, there was a piece of, the equipment programming needs to be done because of the internet phone system. We got shut down due to COVID back then, we had to do an upgrade. Um, it's come up again, so I'll let you help explain that, but it's going to do equipment programming upgrades due to.
So this is a hard, they call it a hardware refresh, and basically it's new computers for our phones. Our phones are on the computer, the screens are touchscreen, and we have to be refreshed just like you replace your computer at home. They, this contract that I emailed you is good for ninety days, and it was mid-December when I got this quote. So mid-March is when it will no longer be good, and I'll have to go back and get another one, and it's not, I threw. At the bottom of it, it lists two different renewal prices. If we don't do this hardware refresh, our maintenance contract will go up about three thousand a year, just to cover the old equipment that's going to possibly be putting down. There's an eight-week lead time, so when I order it, it will take approximately eight weeks to get in and be installed. And this equipment can be moved, it's not, it's, it can be moved, it's not necessarily going to have to.
And you've got the money to pay for it in that four, twenty-two fund?
Yeah. No county money will be used, just the nine-one.
How much money is in that account, Janelle?
Do you have it on the?
Let's see, it's a pretty revolving account, so you're getting money in all the time, you're using that for some wages.
Each month with the state nine-one board, and then in October, they do what they call a ninety-ten split. That ninety-ten split money is not guaranteed. Last year, we got sixty, sixty-four thousand, but that's not guaranteed every year, just the monthly, um, fees that we get.
What's the general ledger balance on that, from month to month?
Okay.
Today. There's three hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight, twenty-nine, eighty-five. And then, again, it changes, so if you want to know what we had, December thirty-first, three hundred and eighty-one, six, sixty, oh-two.
Because we're paying several salaries out of that, aren't we? Six?
Yes.
So it's, there's probably money, this is, I mean, but we're not having any problems with there being a balance. We're never going low.
Okay, any other further questions? So you're looking to buy our, our update, thirty-six thousand dollars?
Yeah.
One thirty-three point seven-six, and then, uh, it'll save us on our maintenance contract then. Moved by John, that we approve this. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Thank you. Next on, uh, our agenda is Personnel Committee, Community Corrections, and EMA. Jen here. Yes.
Okay.
Please. I will take Paula first, then I'll take you, Amy.
Paula working with Community Corrections, I'm here to get approval to move forward with hiring the full-time reentry coordinator, forty-five thousand dollars, a part-time nurse at an hourly rate of thirty-two, oh-eight. This was approved by Personnel Committee, and I did provide you with the job, job descriptions last.
And these two new jobs are through a grant that you received?
Yeah, the salaries will be funded through a grant, and any benefits will be funded through you. And when we make the job offer, it will be, it will be made aware that it's a grant that we will have to read up on.
Questions? Talked about this before. Joan, you have anything? On Personnel? Okay. Your pleasure.
I'll motion.
Nick makes a motion that we approve this. Is there a second? Second by Joan. Further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Thank you.
This morning, Navy District, Little County Emergency Management, um, coming before you today, this morning, uh, to request, uh, reclassification consideration for the emergency management deputy director. Filed this paperwork with the Personnel Committee, and that information was submitted to the Biden and the Wimick shooting, and I believe they provided a recommendation of a point two, um, which is a significant reclassification for this job. Just a little bit of background for those that do not sit on the Personnel Committee, when this job was posted as a full-time deputy director a few years ago, it never went before reclassification, um, and they just took what was considered part-time job responsibilities, um, and didn't refactor it at that time. So, uh, the difference, uh, in the increase is significant as a result of this being a full-time position, and in addition to that, the responsibilities of fulfilling the director position in my absence. So happy to answer any questions you may have. We currently have an open application period right now, which ends on this Friday, uh, the tenth, and we'll be looking to conduct interviews the following week, so we're moving very rapidly on this process, so a decision today would be extremely helpful. I'm sorry, do you have any prospects? We do, we do, we have at least four candidates right now.
Any other questions for Amy? Tom, you have any comments from the Personnel?
All the, the three months on the Personnel Committee gave a favorable pass, and we all agreed that, uh, it needed updated, because like Amy said, the responsibilities have changed, and had more, so it did need to move up under the polls, so, uh, we granted her that, it came back the way it should have, so we all agree that it needs to be there. I know there's somebody off Personnel Committee, maybe, but. Nobody else will, then I'll make a motion.
Our motion by Tom. A second by John. That we approve the reclassification of the deputy position. Any further discussion?
Yeah, if I could just second, so this hasn't been a full-time position in the past, though?
It actually has, but it failed to go before WIS, where revaluation work was done. Uh, when I spoke with the WIS representative, uh, she indicated the same, that when they had written the original job description that we used for full-time, it was actually only considering part-time after in that, in the scope of the job.
So how long, I guess, how long has it been a, a full-time position?
Actually, since, uh, after we refactored, I'd have to go back a little bit of years, but, um, it's been at least three years, because I've been through two directors prior to this one, deputy directors, that it was considered a full-time, but it was not factored back yet.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? We'll act on the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same. Joe did it. Thank you. Commissioners report?
So, um, yesterday, the commissioners approved a maintenance agreement with Baker Tilly to continue with our financial, our comprehensive financial plan. That was something we had talked about before. It had been, um, a long time since we had done one, when we hired them to do this previous one, and, and they let us know that if we maintain it, it costs a lot less over time, rather than having them start from scratch by waiting ten years to have another one done. And, um, we talked about that a lot through the bonding process with the jail, and how, really, we would, we would all stand to gain from that, so the commissioners approved that, um, maintenance agreement with them. The claims review, um, I had been talking to Jim recently, and, and probably made some comments to some others, um, about how it might be a good idea for council to start joining commissioners and reviewing claims. This is something that the commissioners do prior to every meeting, every commissioner meeting. And, you know, my thought is, you all are, are passing or approving budgets, I think it's probably a good idea for you to know how the funds then are being utilized, um, so that when requests are coming forward, things might make a little more sense, and, you know, just, I think it's just good practice. So Jim joined Rob, um, on Friday, right, and, and I think they finished up on Monday morning. The, the claims are, are ready, they can be ready, um, oftentimes by Friday, or even, even earlier sometimes, uh, but no later than Monday prior to a commissioner meeting. And so we were just wondering if there'd be any interest, um, if maybe a member of council would want to rotate through and, and, and join a commissioner in reviewing those claims, so I don't know.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. Uh, of course, Rob's new too, so Tamra spent some time with us to go through those claims, and some of them are pretty easy, some of them are interesting and, and do need to look at. I remember thirty years ago, we did the claims during the commissioners' meeting, so it's, it's different, but, uh, the thing is, like, like Chad said, just so happens, Tamra said they'd be ready Friday afternoon, I was going to be in town, Rob was going to be in town, it worked out, and, and we sat down and went through most of them. I came into the meeting yesterday, I think there was three other claims that we went up and glanced at, which was really easy to look at, but it was really interesting. I didn't know if, we didn't know if there'd be any interest, uh, to do that on occasion. We would, we would have the commissioners ahead of time say who's going to do the claims, and we'd match a council person to that, so you could make, you could, you could talk to each other and decide when you would do that, but I, I think it's good education. So I, I, you know, I'd, I'd recommend it.
I'd be interested in helping out, really seeing what was going on.
Okay, just, just. So John and Nick, anyone else? Okay.
I'm a little apprehensive when Chad said you guys started on Friday and got done on Sunday, I mean, that's a long weekend. So I think I'll just decline at this point.
They didn't provide meals either, so. That's fine, everybody's, if you get a lax period, you know, I know this summer in Thor is, is a tough, busy time, but if you get one and you want to do claims, just, just let us know and we'll work you in.
Yeah.
So we got four of us anyway.
Sure, yep. We'll just, uh, keep y'all posted then on when we're doing it. So yesterday also, we started a conversation about the KIM cap rate. Currently, our KIM cap rate is, uh, point zero one five, and the maximum allowed is, uh, point zero three three three, and, um, recently, it had just been presented to us, I think, by Baker Tilly, uh, as, as part of that five-year comprehensive plan. Uh, I think they're just recommending that we look at that, about, you know, increasing that up and, and using, um, that to its, to its highest potential. But there is a, a lengthy process, uh, to do that, and there's a deadline of May thirty-first, so if that's something that the commissioners, uh, want to do, then we'd really have to get started on it soon. But I think that, um, if, if we took it to the max, it would generate an additional, um, three, three, three ninety, three hundred and ninety thousand annually, um, and I'm, personally, I'm, I'm just wanting to look at, um, how the, uh, what is it called, the growth quotient and assessments, how, how that plays into it, because if, um, you raise that rate, does it automatically raise taxes, or will the growth quotient and assessments offset that, and if not, raise taxes, and that, that's a huge question. So commissioners are, are looking into it, the discussion was tabled yesterday, but we're just investigating, we're just looking into it this time. So wanted to keep you in the loop on that, and then also, we're, uh, really pleased we had our, our bond sale on the jail on the twenty-sixth, and we were fearing, um, at the end of the year, we were fearing five, five-point-five percent interest rates, we were, we were pleased to get a three-point-eight-four percent interest rate in the bond sale, and the total amount of the bond, uh, came in at twenty-four million, four hundred fifty-five thousand. So, um, closing on, on that, bond sale will happen on Thursday.
I will say, in that process, and, and some of you were here, when we talked with Baker Tilly getting ready, we had, we had an interview by Standard and Poor's, who rates the counties or the entities, I should say, uh, so we had a run-through a little bit with Baker Tilly, and I know Joan, and Tom, and Kim, and myself, and, and the commissioners was there, and then, uh, we actually did a run-through with ourselves, because Baker Tilly provided us with an agenda, kind of, and, and Dale Book was very much a, a part of our presentation then. I think everyone did very, very good. Tiffany was involved, uh, Chad talked about the project, Tiffany answered questions on our financials, uh, I answered questions on budgetary, Dale gave a, a rundown of our in, industrial and our job situation here. It went very well, uh, we got an A-plus rating, uh, from that, and, uh, and that certainly helped with the, with the rate that, that we received on that, so congratulations to everyone, uh, it was a great team effort and, uh, and a, and a nice rate, considering the times.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Any questions for Chad, or? Okay. We, uh, we have a bill on a hundred and forty dollars on the Indiana Association of County Council dues. Chad was wondering if we wanted to pay this, or the commissioners were, uh, talking with Chad was wondering if we wanted to pay this or the commissioners were talking with Tiffany. This is where we get some of our bulletins out of the state and so forth. It's a hundred and forty dollars. Probably need to go ahead and, and pay the dues and get the information from the state and our association.
I'll make a motion that the commissioners pay it.
Okay.
Out of their budget.
Say a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Nick. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Okay, minutes of our previous meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Have a motion by Thor to approve minutes as presented. Is there a second? Second by Tom. Corrections or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, say. Any comments from the public? Yes? Identify yourself, please.
So I, I reached out to the commissioner and I thought I was thinking of him. And from what I understand, I saw some very clear issues. I, I went back and forth and didn't know which path. He explained that the location was chosen sometime in twenty twenty. That all business owners in Armstrong Park were approached by the previous landowner prior to the county purchasing the land and quoting. So the issue with that, first I wanted to say, I don't know when it became sufficient for a landowner to notify property. And what took place there, I'm wondering if you're aware of what took place. The previous landowner approached the businesses, gave them a document in time, basically asking for a favor so that he could remove this property from their subdivision. Now, I don't know if you understand what covenants and restrictions are or why they're created, but I'll explain that. So when a, when a subdivision is created, a lot of times the creator of a subdivision will put covenants or restrictions in place. You need to protect property owners. So that the property owners are protected from things like a jail going into the middle of their subdivision. Those are why they're put in place, to protect the property owner. These property owners are all manipulated and deceived into signing off those rights. They signed this amendment allowing a property to be pulled out of their subdivision, not understanding that it was for a jail. They see the document, hey, I want to sell the property, but nothing said about, hey, I want to sell the property. I want to pull this property out of the subdivision so that we can put a jail here. Now, another argument that I have is, is property values and how it affects property values. Chad quoted the email again. I've not seen any evidence that the detention center is lower surrounding property values. He says we currently have a facility in downtown Miami City. I looked into that source footage that would top fifteen to twenty-five million to go pay. So we have a multimillion dollar facility in downtown Miami City. So I looked at property values in downtown Miami City around this multimillion dollar facility that was put in. So we, I looked just, I pulled up GIS. I looked at just on Main Street. I didn't want to pull up plenty of different properties, but I just went property to property to property and it skipped it. So we have a bank on the corner of Market Street and Main Street, valued at two forty-nine cents. Okay? State Farm Insurance, there on Main Street across from a porkhouse, valued at sixty-four thousand six hundred thousand. The Square Restaurant, valued at one thirty-four thousand. The Alps, one ninety-seven thousand. Blue Moon Bakery, thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand. Favor Law Office, thirty thousand eight hundred. That's correct. It's thirty thousand eight hundred. Those are some pretty low property values. Okay, so we have average sales price or average asset value of downtown properties between hundred and hundred fifty thousand dollars. So let's look at the property values over in Armstrong Park where these businesses invested in our community, millions. Trusted our community when they invested there. They tried to dump Armstrong when he asked for the favor for them to sign off of their, their rights and the covenants and restrictions that would have prevented the, the amendments that were approved for jail theater. Should have never even went in front of a plan commission. It wouldn't have been able to had there not been deceit and had there not been manipulation. So let's look at Armstrong Park, a bank, prosperous bank, valued six hundred and seventy-six thousand. Okay, let's look back at the bank downtown, valued two forty-nine, difference. State Farm Insurance Agency, Armstrong Park, valued three hundred and eighty thousand eight hundred dollars. State Farm Park Downtown or State Farm Insurance Agency Downtown, sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars. Patterson Dettles, one million nine hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. The Senior Assisted Living Facility, three million seven hundred forty-four thousand. Quality Inn, one million eighteen thousand. Holiday Inn, two million six hundred eighty thousand dollars. There's a difference in property values. There's a huge difference in location. People that purchased their property in Armstrong Park, they thought that they were purchasing a property that would be quiet. Covenants and restrictions are created to protect their quiet enjoyment of their property. They were manipulated out of those who gave them up. So the whole project on the jail, in my opinion, is based on deceit, lies and manipulation. Those property owners have been seeking out. I'm thankful to see the signs in town. I apologize to those property owners for being here today and not being at prior meetings because I wasn't aware. I was made aware that there was one newspaper article to notify the community that a location had been chosen. One newspaper article in over two years. And as I've talked to people in the community, no one seems to know that a location's been chosen. They say they do know. They've only heard in the last few weeks. So did you really, did we really do our due diligence in making sure the community knew that we were spending thirty-nine million dollars? And that we were also going to jab property owners who trusted this community. Trusted us enough to invest millions, their livelihood. I'm a property owner in Woodley County. I'm a business owner in Woodley County. I chose my downtown location. Very discounted. What I paid to be downtown, close to the jail, is nothing like what I would pay if I were to rent out an office in Patterson Dettles building, which is for lease. I didn't look at what the price was, but I assure you it's going to be way more than what I paid downtown. And there is, and as I've been surveying on Facebook, just asking the question. And I asked Rob Schuman the other day and he said he couldn't answer it, but I wonder if you can. If I were your real estate agent, I were selling you a property for your business. Price of a hundred thousand dollars, exact same building. Okay? You're going to put your business in. We're going to assume it's not a bondmine company, not a law office, it's not a real estate office. Someone that would benefit from being around those types of things. Do you have a choice between purchasing that property next to a jail or next to other properties of the same kind in a subdivision, same price, same building? Location is the only difference. Which are you going to choose? And to answer that question, I think you know. None of us are going to choose to go next to a jail unless there is some sort of incentive. So I, I'm coming before this, before you saying today, is this really who we are in Woodley County? Is this how we do things? I know it's, I know it's the reputation that we've gained over the years. I hear it. I hear it from the attorneys in Portland. I've heard it from my father. I've heard it from my grandfather. I'm third generation real estate owner. I've heard all the stories of the good old boys of them. I've heard all the stories of how people in the community have been screwed out of their property through deception and manipulation. And I'm living one right now.
Anyone else?
K U S five hundred New York. I would like to say that I am one hundred percent in favor of the new jail. One hundred percent in favor of our law enforcement. They do an excellent job. However, I am adamantly opposed to this location. And spoke wonderfully about things I know nothing about. However, as a citizen, I am personally not a business owner. I do not have a business. I have all agency. However, I am looking at it as a parent and as a citizen. And I see big safety issues with sticking it back there and it, it all hemmed in, is landlocked, that piece of property that you've chosen. If it were me, I'd want a nice, big, wide open piece of property with two, minimum two dedicated drives on the main road. You have gone, I, March, March twenty eighth of twenty twenty-two. It was brought up and I leave this meeting here about having to exit, to entry. But nothing has come of that. No one has heard a thing. You are limiting the services of your deputies, sticking them back there without another way out. There's only one way. And that's just, why not have dedicated roads? Why not have it quicker for them? You have them, if, have you been back there? Have any of you been back there? You drive back and it's, it's slow and you think about, I've seen the, the layout for the property. Sure, I give you a piece of property. I can even fix it up on it, make it look pretty. That's great. However, the meandering that those officers have to take to get out of that, that area. That's just not right to them or the people they're trying to get to for whatever reason. And I know I've heard that they're not supposed to be at the jail site. They're supposed to be on patrol. However, I'm sure everyone here has experienced being in town when you've had two to three deputy cars booming down, you know, nine or van duren. I, I witnessed it twice in the last two weeks. That tells me they didn't automatically just do converge. They came from the same location. This location, there's safety issues with no sidewalks or lighting or road conditions. This isn't downtown curbs. This is, this looks like a country road. It's a quiet country road back there. Your drive, your current driveway emptyed out right in front of the Seagull Center. What is wrong with that? A lot. You're, you're, that's how you're treating your seniors in this community. There's no other way out of that area. You have trees behind that property that is a wetland. See, even the city have some plants in the city that doesn't need it, a green area. You're not going through that. Okay? The, the solar park is blocking the continuation of a road. Where else can you go? You don't have another plan to get people out. And then, something else I didn't know, but when people are released from your facility, sixty percent at least, which are not from around here, they're released on foot. They're in trouble with the correction people wandering up and down connectionway in the dark. Almost, I mean, I've almost run into a few because of the wind or grass and you're going to release people back there and have them wander where, where, but you're planning to get them somewhere else. There are a lot of issues and I, I think it's a very poor choice with taxpayer dollars. The taxpayers do not know. Maybe if you come, if you have time to come to eight o'clock meetings, maybe you know about this. But they don't. Not from one newspaper article. There's nothing on, if, if I was excited about any project and I was proud of what I've chosen, I think it would be on multiple sites. It would, I, there's nothing on Facebook pages. I see nothing. Maybe it's been removed. I don't know, but it's not there. And it's very, very disappointing for this town. Does not have answers and did not be sharing it because should be shouting it from the rooftops. I love what we've done. But.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's Commissioner.
Yeah, so currently there's not a plan for the old jail. No, I, no, I wouldn't say it's an abandoned property. We just are certain at this time how that, how that property will be utilized. We're not abandoning it. There's, there may be interest by one party in, in the building. And the, the county hasn't decided. I mean, commissioners haven't even discussed that we haven't decided if one part. Well, again, we don't, we don't know yet what we're going to do with the building. We're, we're two years out from a new building and we don't, we don't know yet how we're going to utilize the old building.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, but isn't this federally mandated? Don't we have to do something with our jail?
We're not there yet, but we were inching closer and closer. I mean, the reason that we're, the reason we're building a jail is not because there was necessarily something wrong with the old jail, but because the, we have ninety beds. You're only supposed to have eighty percent head count at any given time. And our jail population was, I mean, the highest we saw was one, one forty, one forty-six. Sean, thank you. We were, we were consistently one-ten, one-twenty. We were in, in, in danger, you know, and, and really needed to do something about bed space with the jail.
Constantly overcapacity.
We explored other options. We, we explored adding on to the existing jail, the trouble with, that was, it was built for a second floor. But that could only be administrative space. So you couldn't have a second floor of, of inmate space. The, the beams and the, and the exterior walls couldn't support that. And, and so it would, it would, in, in any changes that you made to that jail then, you would have to bring the entire building to, to twenty twenty-three standards, which was built in nineteen eighty-seven. That would include a lot of changes to the building. And so at what point then is it cost-effective? It wouldn't be. So it made more sense to build new and, and to build forward-thinking. And so the, the design that we went with is a pod design that is approximately two hundred and twenty beds. And then you can add one more wing of another approximately two hundred and twenty beds. That would be the only addition you can do on this design. But that is forward-thinking because, you know, we're, we're averaging about one hundred. The population of the jail is averaging about one hundred to one-ten right now, a spike as the weather gets warmer and, and people are more active. So we won't, we won't move to that new jail and be full. We're not going to be at capacity. You know, we're, we're building it now with future in mind. And we had a, a study done by, what was Joe Murat's Performance Services? And there was another, there was another business time that did this study that said, you know, based on, based on trending, this is what we expect you would need for bed space for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. And so, you know, that's, that's why we're here now, I think. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. We have a plan. The plan is to build a jail. That's right. That's correct.
I think it's an exaggeration to say that there's no plan. The plan is either to use the building, the current jail for county office space or another county agency or to sell it to someone that would be interested in using the space. So the details of the plan might not be finished, but there's definitely a plan in place. The building's not going to be just left abandoned, even if it's not occupied, it'll still be maintained by the county. Again, this is, I'm not going to pick over for Jim, but this is a public input and not really a question or answer session. And we, we don't have an answer for that for you. I mean, that's all in the minutes that can be looked up. I'm, I can look it up and provide it to you.
I mean, that's all in the minutes that can be looked up and, and look it up and provide it to you, but, um, we're not.
We, yeah, we, we follow, uh, standards that are legal counsel and on both, both the funding and everything that, that have done a lot of these. So we think we're right in line with what we should have done and have done, uh, on that. So, uh, I, I don't think we're out of line at all on how this has been approved. Any other? Yes? Okay. You need to understand the, our, our, what our role is and what the commissioner's role is.
No, and that is something that we need more community and base their on.
Okay, because a lot of those questions that you're asking us or comment should be funneled to commissioners. Their policy, their, that's their project and so forth. Okay? Okay. Anything else? Okay?
Ryan, all one-on-one sound.
I'm, I'm done, I shut it off. We're going to, we're going on. Yeah, nobody commented, so I'm, I was going to start with John Depp. All right, Ryan.
Well, uh, good example there of you just seeing the public, I appreciate the, the public, uh, display of how you sustain our, our input. Um, I'm reading back on what you said. The, the schedule meeting was on your website from two thousand twenty. You know, that's, that's a pretty simple thing to update. The other thing is public perception. Public perception of this town. In two thousand ten, as part of, or, uh, ten years ago, I'm sorry, I think it's about two thousand twelve, we did the same thing. We lost our planning commission and tried to jam some rules down the other side. There's, there's never. Wind project that took no account on property size that people don't live around that thing. And then, once we did a little digging and they did the minimum, mind you, they didn't. Well, a few of the public figured out that there was going to be a vote on an ordinance to govern a wind project in our county. And had a couple of days to rally enough some of the leaders that they went, oh, wait, the public has a point there and they didn't vote on that. Ultimately, it was a game to fruition. I mean, it came to the public's knowledge that the planning commission president at the time and one other planning commission member had signed contracts and had already taken money from the wind developers to try and bring this project into the town. Uh, and that, that's a class B felony of, of conflict of interest that those people sat on that planning commission and negotiated the ordinance that is supposed to govern wind projects that was trying to come into our town. Mind you, it all felt like it was done in the dark of night. Once again, I find out just a few days ago that this jail's happened. Sure does look like another thing that we tried to do in the dark of night. But nobody, I talked to my friends, my family, they didn't really know much about it. Um, and it sure does look like again that we've done the same thing. We've got a good old boy's property owner. We've got a good old boy's county that purchased good old boy's property and is going to build this thirty-nine million dollar jail in a horrible location and we took no look. I mean, we did all these studies, did we do the studies about property values? You know, we put out all this money for these, what, these firms that come in and paying money to do a study, tell us what to do. Did anybody, did anybody spend any money? That's hypothetical, don't put a hand through it. Did we spend any money on a study for property values for the people around the place? Did we, did, did we do a study on traffic? We got one road in, one road out to this property. Like, it's a horrible location. Just mechanically, it's a horrible location, you know? We have another thing that's going to be coming into the public life. We've got several hundred acre solar farm that's going to become a somewhere in town. Looks to me like it's going to be in another good old boy's property. Nobody knows about it. Maybe some of you that are new don't know more about it today, but we've got several, several hundred acre full solar farm that could come through this town. Nobody knows about that either. I don't know, you all probably do, because it probably passed something on it to govern, to govern how it, how it's, uh, set up. And I'd, I'd like to pose the question to the public again. I wonder if they did any, did they did any research, did any studies on how that would affect property.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to shut you off because this isn't a, this isn't a, a thing on, on discussion.
I'm just saying, public perception is, it was a good old boy's deal here. And it seems like you haven't been very honest with the public, probably. That's, that's what it seems like to the public and then public perception.
First of all, Ryan, I do know that when the windmills went, I wasn't on any of these boards, but when the windmills went through, I think there was major, major discussion in the plan commission, several, several meetings on that. And I think that was a very controversial, uh, decision. Well, I, I don't know about that, so. I.
It was, it was a handshake deal. It was outside of, uh, public curfew and as soon as it came to public flight, all of a sudden.
I'm not going to debate that, but I don't think that's the facts on that, so.
It is. I was at every meeting, Jim.
But it, it, there was a lot of meetings on it, so it was very open to the public. So, okay, we'll go on. I'm going to shut the public comment off so we can move on. I'll go to Councilman Barrett, do you have anything?
I have one question and I noticed we've been ordered through this whole process on that. Would you identify yourself and who you represent?
I can't hear you.
Okay. Anything else, John? John? Councilman, I just.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Brewer?
I have nothing.
Mr. Warner?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Meetings are done.